Here.
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 Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome everyone to the July fifteenth meeting of the Ashland City Council. We have a full agenda this evening. First item will be the approval of the minutes from the July first meeting. If there are no additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes, I'll ask for a motion to approve as submitted.
Moved to approve.
Second. Thank you.
Lawson. Aye.
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 Minutes will stand approved. First ordinance this evening will be an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor, director of public service, to advertise for bids to enter into a contract for the US forty-two Mifflin Avenue Traffic Signal Reconstruction Project in the city of Ashland, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Is there a motion for non-reading in full?
Moved for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Okay, this is a project that we've been talking about for some time. This is located at the intersection of Mifflin Avenue and US forty-two by our newly constructed firehouse. At that particular location, of course, there already exists a traffic signal, but it's time to upgrade that traffic signal. The engineer estimates that it will come at a cost of around five hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars. We've been very fortunate to get a state grant through the Ohio Public Works Commission that will cover three hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and sixteen of that overall cost. So we got a blessing there to get a grant that size to help offset the cost of the intersection upgrade. Now, what will change at that intersection, still the traffic will still flow the same way, but all the technology will be new. And as a result, it will now be controlled by radar, so it will be able to detect where the traffic is sitting, and even before it stops at the light, it'll be able to detect where the traffic is moving and change the signal in a way that moves the traffic through most efficiently. It also will have the preemption technology, so that the fire department, of course, can hit a button and turn all of the directions red at the same time. It does have that already, and will actually be moving over the system that is there, but upgrading it in the process. The project includes all new poles for the traffic signals, all new mastheads. Right now, the lights are hanging on wires. Now it'll be steel poles and matched throughout with other places throughout the city. There'll be new street signage. Of course, it'll be following the lines of what you see downtown with the Ashland blue and the font that we use for the new street signs that we've been replacing. And you will also see the addition of some drainage improvements there at one portion of the intersection where water seems to pool when it rains, and new curb ramps to make it ADA compliant. So again, this is a project that we've been discussing for quite some time, but now it is time to go to bid.
All right. Questions, discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye. I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye. Motion to approve the ordinance?
Moved to approve.
Second. Thank you.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Ordinance fifty-nine dash twenty-five.
We hope to enter into a contract by fall of this year, but we're being told that the polls could take six to eight months to get here. So, no definitive dot dead, no definitive timeline on when the project might be complete.
All right. Next, we have an ordinance enacting section eleven eighty-three point zero-three and amending section eleven fifty-five oh-two at the codified, of the codified ordinances of the city of Ashland, Ohio, relative to the storage of parking of recreational vehicles and trailers, and declaring an emergency.
Moved for non-reading in full.
Second. Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
All right, so I have a feeling this is probably the reason a lot of you are here. For those of you who've been around the city for some time, you're probably aware of the fact that for decades, we can't quite figure out how far back. We think it's probably in the nineteen-sixties, but no one seems to know for sure, and none of us were here in the nineteen-sixties except for our law director. But, over the decades in the city of Ashland, our policy has been, you cannot store a boat, an RV, or a camper in your front yard or your side yard long-term. They can be there for several days, to be specific, I think three days is what the actual ordinance says. But for three days, you can store them in your front or side yard, so that would include your driveway, if your driveway's up front. But, if you want to store them on a more long-term basis, you can do so in your back lawn. That has been the city policy for decades. Some of you might have even over the years got a citation if someone complained in your neighborhood that you had a trailer or boat in your front lawn for longer than three days. Well, all that being said, over the years, whenever we would get a complaint, the inspectors go out, they make sure that they are in fact in violation, that there is a trailer, or there's an RV, or there's some watercraft on a trailer in the front lawns or in the driveway. They take pictures, and if you're there that day, they'll probably talk to you about it. And most people take care of it right away, because many aren't aware of it. Others will receive the letter, and usually it's taken care of right away. I'll be honest with you, I don't know that we've ever really had any problem with anyone once they received notice that they weren't allowed to have them in their front yards. Well, recently, early this year, we had a complaint in one of our neighborhoods about a property owner who was storing his pontoon boat in his front yard for months at a time. In fact, don't hold me to this, but I believe it was during the winter months while he went to Florida. Well, as you might imagine, the neighbors weren't thrilled to look at that trailer, and so they contacted the city, he's not allowed to do this, can you come out and check it out? Our inspector went out, took pictures, sure enough, it's a nice pontoon boat, and it covered very nicely in front of a nice home, but it is in violation if it's sitting there for months at a time. With that in mind, a citation was issued. The gentleman that received the citation, of course, was not happy with that. And so, as a result, he went to work to try to study the ordinances and the policies that were on the book to see if this was in fact true. And after going through the words at length, and then meeting with our city engineer, and eventually our law director's representative, Andrew Bush, our assistant law director, they came to the conclusion that our current language on the books does not clearly define that that is the city's policy. For years, the city was issuing those citations based on the fact that trailers were not allowed in the front yard. And let's face it, most people's boats probably not sitting off a trailer in their concrete driveway or in their front yard grass, they're probably on a trailer. And so for years, it wasn't an issue, because I think most people knew if you're not allowed to have a recreational vehicle on a trailer in your front yard, a boat would be included. Well, this particular gentleman argued that that's not the case, and it doesn't say boat, and furthermore, it doesn't define trailer. So with that in mind, the law director's office and the city engineer's office agreed, we probably do need to tighten up the language. Not change the policy, but tighten up the language, so it's very clear. So this new language that we have before us tonight, and certainly if any of you want to see it, you can, but this is what is critical about this new language. It clearly says recreational vehicles and trailers. This is the part, listen carefully. Recreational vehicles, including watercraft, trailers for watercraft, which would be boats and pontoon boats, and other trailers may only be stored or parked on any parcel within the city, subject to the following conditions. Now, I'm gonna, gonna read down through all the technical parts, but the one you'd probably be interested in, they may only be parked for seventy-two hours or less in the front and side yards for loading and unloading, or temporary storage, or some might be waxing their boat at that time. You can store them for longer periods of time, as is the case today, even if the council chooses to take no action, in your backyards. But if it's a camper, or it's an RV, you just can't have it occupied by a resident. So in other words, you're not able to pull up your camper in your backyard and let Uncle John and Aunt Suzie live there permanently. But you can store your boat, you can store your RV, you can store your camper in your back lawn. That is the current policy, that is the new policy. And the current policy says you can't keep a boat in your front yard, you can't keep a camper in your front yard, you can't keep an RV in your front yard, but, you can have it there for about three days. And I'll be honest with you, the city has never been heavy-handed about it. We aren't sending people out to look to see if you've got a boat in your front lawn, or if you've got a camper, or you've got some other storage trailer. Usually, it's brought to our attention by one of the friendly neighbors that are sick of looking at it. And that's when we end up going out and taking a look, and if it is in fact in violation, then a citation is issued. I will tell you that my dear friend who is upset with this policy, who is the reason that you're all here today, I don't know if he'd consider himself my friend, but I think he's a friendly guy, I will tell you that he makes the case it's taking everyone's freedom. Now, these folks that work with me know that I am the guy that believes that is our most valuable and precious asset. That's why we don't have a ban on fireworks, that's why you don't have a property maintenance code, because we're not willing to be restrictive like that. Every other city has one. And incidentally, most every other city has a policy that doesn't allow you to store a camper, RV, or boat in your front lawn or driveway. So we all understand freedom. This isn't about taking away your freedom, it's about protecting our community. Because let's just play this out. What if on Morgan Avenue, or your street, whatever your street is, every lawn has a big camper in the front yard? And it's allowed to be there permanently. Most people are gonna say, that's probably not a good policy for the city. Or, everyone has a great big pontoon boat on their little lot, so now they can't park in their drive, they've gotta park on the street, because they're storing their boats up and down our streets. No one is trying to be overly restrictive, and furthermore, we're not introducing a new policy. The only reason this has come up is because one individual who was storing his boat for long, long periods of time, while he was not even here to look at it, decided that he would search our language and try to argue that, that it wasn't covering his situation. And so that's what brings us here tonight, otherwise, this city council wouldn't even be looking at this issue, because we've not had a problem with it until now. And if you have a boat, and you have a camper, and you have an RV, you may be sitting here thinking that you've had it parked in your lawn for months. Well, evidently, the neighbors don't care, because we haven't heard about it. And if they did, let us know, we would send someone out. But again, no one's gonna arrest you on the scene, or find you instantly. You're given, I think the letters say thirty days to find a new location or to move it to your backyard. So, that's what this is all about tonight.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Question?
Yes.
Okay, you've covered the boats and that. What about just a plain trailer that you put your lawnmower on when you need to take it service by there and give your mom a hundred dollars to come and get it?
That, you're not gonna be cited for that. This is about just what it says, recreational vehicles and trailers.
Because the original says trailers.
Exactly, exactly. And that was the argument of the gentleman that brought it to everyone's attention, is that it doesn't define trailers clearly. So is this every kind of trailer, a motorcycle trailer, a ATV trailer, and so on? And I'll be honest with you, I don't think we've ever really got into that, because over the years, the city hasn't been searching out neighborhoods to see if we can find someone with a trailer that we could possibly write up. It was only enforced when it was something that was pretty blatant, and it was pretty long-term.
Well, mine's been there for at least ten years, but that's...
Well, then, we're going out tomorrow. No, no. There's one behind you, Bill.
Um, thank you. I'm that person. I'm a slopper. I'm that person. I take a little bit of exceptions to some of the things that mayor has said.
Okay.
Number one, I don't have a small lot. Number two, when my pontoon, even, my pontoon boat was covered and was in my driveway for a long period of time, part of that time I was in Florida, the rest of the time I was home. I never parked in the street, I never blocked the sidewalk, I never blocked access to the street. It's, it, there are, there are campers, there are motorhomes, there are boats, there are big utility trailers parked everywhere. I have a prepared statement, this, this is a little extemporaneous, but I find that any ordinance that is that subjective, or that, that it takes a complaint before the ordinance gets, gets acted upon, is not an ordinance. In my, in my, it's not an ordinance. It's something that's out there on the books, and I would take a little bit of exception to the fact that although the city has been using this policy for years, decades, from what I understand, when you read through the policy, the policy really is a policy eleven fifty-five that deals with mobile homes and mobile home courts. I didn't fit into that, I'm not, I don't have a mobile home court. And the definition of trailer is really a mobile home, it's something that has sleeping environment, sleeping quarters. And I have it, and I can read it if, if anybody would like to read it, because I've, I've done my homework. I've spent my time. Now, the reason that I brought this to the attention to begin with had little to do with the fact that they asked me to remove my boat. It had the fact, it had to do with the fact that, in the letter that I received, it clearly states that I was guilty of a misdemeanor because I had my boat in my driveway. Not that I may be convicted of a misdemeanor, not that I may be taken to court. It says, in plain language, and I can read it to you, I was guilty of a misdemeanor. All I wanted to do was say, number one, the policy doesn't apply, because it doesn't meet your definitions. And number two, I would just like this letter removed from my record, because I'm not guilty of a misdemeanor when it doesn't meet the criteria of the ordinance that exists in the city of Ashland, or the definitions that exist that relate to that ordinance. So, that's all I wanted to do. However, it was very difficult to get any of that done. In fact, it still isn't done, and I'm still upset about that. I haven't had a parking ticket, I haven't had a speeding ticket in twenty, thirty years. To be found guilty of misdemeanor without even going to court, because my boat was parked in my driveway, and yes, I was gone for two and a half or three months of the four months that it was there, it's my driveway, you know? Most of my neighbors couldn't care less.
I look at it every day, because it's, it's out my window of the bedroom. It didn't bother me.
How much is this, how much is this fine?
I think it's up to a hundred and fifty dollars, isn't it?
A hundred and twenty dollars. If it's, if it doesn't get removed, it's a, you're guilty of, or the second offense, you're guilty of a fourth degree misdemeanor, and it's, it goes up to like...
But it's, it's a misdemeanor. It's a hundred and fifty dollar fine if you do not move it. How long do you get, thirty days?
I believe so, thirty days.
Thirty days.
And even though Mr. Slosser...
And that's why we're here?
And even though Mr. Slosser is making this comment, he, the, he is not guilty of any crime until he goes to court. I've tried to explain this to him numerous times. No one is guilty in this American system, or in Ashland, until you don't do it, and you're taken to court, and you get a chance to represent yourself, and the judge decides, yep, you're in violation.
I understand that. Now, the, here's the, here, the point was, it wasn't that I had a hundred and twenty days, then I was gonna be, it says, whoever violates any provision of this section is guilty of a minor misdemeanor upon the first offense, a hundred and fifty dollar fine. Okay, so, that's the letter that I received. Now, if the letter would've said, move it, and, and I keep it there, I keep it at Pleasant Hill Lake all during the season. So it was gonna be moved as soon as I got back from Florida. So, it isn't, it wasn't about parking it there. I mean, if I, if they would've said, you know, if you don't move it, this is gonna happen...
That's what we're saying in that letter.
But that's, no, that's not what this letter says.
That, that language is advising you of what the penalties are. It's not saying you're guilty of it, you're not guilty of it until a court decides that you're guilty.
That's what you say, but that's not what the letter says.
That is what, the letter says whoever violates this section. And you don't violate that section until a court finds that you have violated it. You were, you weren't even cited with it.
Why, why doesn't it say that in the letter then?
I'm telling you, that's what the letter says, that's what that means.
You know, Andrew, we met about this, and you know...
I know.
You know that that's what this letter says.
That is not what that letter says.
That's your interpretation. I'm the one who has this letter in my hand, that I received this letter. It doesn't say you may, you may be fucked, you may have to go to court to, to prove yourself. You may, you may have to go to court and be found guilty. This says, that's what this says.
Can you access your backyard?
I can.
So the boat didn't get put in the backyard before you went to Florida, the smaller?
No, no, why would I? I didn't know that this, that this ordinance existed, because how many, I'm not sure how many of you know that this ord, that ordinance existed. Many of you probably have...
I, I knew it existed, but I knew it was on vehicles.
Oh yeah, you're right.
It was on vehicles.
Yeah, unlicensed vehicles.
And not having something around.
You're right.
So I knew there was a law on it. And I'm guilty, I do have a boat sitting out my driveway, I do have a twenty seven footer sitting on the side yard, so I'm guilty.
Yeah.
But long as there is a warning, because I received that letter, it told me I would be misdemeanor if I did not do something about moving.
And did you move it?
Yeah. Yeah, I moved it, I mean, there was no hassle, it was moved.
I moved mine too, I went and put it in the water.
Okay, well, there was no big deal, there was no hassle, I moved the vehicle.
I, I'd be disappointed differently than obviously...
But then we get it on Facebook of all of, everybody in here getting fired up, because we own our property, and the city's trying to tell us what we can do, can't do.
Right.
But, but, and it's always been in there about vehicles.
Question?
Yes.
Or comment? Oh, I understand the importance of the city making an ordinance like this, but, in my opinion, it shouldn't matter what my neighbors think if I have a messy yard, or a trailer parked in my yard, front yard or backyard. I understand, and in some cases, it could be a hazard or a danger to others, but unless that's happening here in Ashland, I don't think that my neighbor should have much of a say-so of what I put in my yard, unless it's some kind of dangerous to the community.
Or if the yard's messy, they're not taking care of it, but if everybody is that way...
Exactly.
You know, I, and I've, and I've explained this. On our street, we live on, on Forest Era, it runs one block. There's only twelve houses. Out of that, seven of us are seniors, we're women, and we live alone. I don't care, I don't know of anybody in the neighborhood that cares about his. I have a small trailer that I can put my lawnmower on. We did have a lady at the end had, I don't know, it looked like a house trailer to me, but... It was a big camper, it was in disarray, and it sat there for months. And I'm like, Bill, just going out to Walmart, I can tell you where there's boats sitting in, in law, in people's yards. And I'm curious why maybe their neighbors didn't say anything. Uh, we don't know what neighbor would've said about the twelve people that live there. So this is...
I don't know the name either.
I know I feel that this needs to be discussed with the residents of, of the city, because...
So let me tell you, let me tell you.
The seniors don't have the funds to put stuff in. We worked hard to get that boat, and now you want them to pay an outrageous amount...
Most people regard the age.
I can't put something in my backyard, because I own seven feet on each side. Bill's kind enough, he lets me go up and down once in a while with my, when I had the mower. And I'm on his property, and my mowers that come and mow, naturally it's gotta get somebody here.
Now, one question for you.
Yes.
Okay, you're saying that we cannot park in our drive, we can't park in our front yard. Okay, since it is our property, so are you gonna come in and pave us an area in our backyard?
No, we're not. No.
Well, what happens when the neighbors are sitting there, and they're, they're looking at it, because they're...
Well, guess what? The city ordinance allows it, so that shouldn't be an issue. And let me just tell you, folks, do you know what we get more complaints about than anything else? Is people not keeping up their properties. All across the city, whether it's what you consider a wealthy neighborhood, what it's, you consider a low-income neighborhood. That is what every one of us hear about more than anything else. And if you've watched these commission, these county, uh, city meetings, you've seen people come in and stand at that microphone and go on and on how we're not doing anything about cleaning up the city. Well, I'll tell you, that's absolutely false. We've got rid of more than a hundred abandoned structures, and we continue to do so every day. And we continue to issue those citations when your neighbor isn't mowing their lawn, and it's more than twelve inches, because that's what the law in Ohio, in Ashland requires. Let me tell you, it's interesting to hear, well, we don't care what our neighbor's lawn looks like? Yes, that's a new comment. I have not heard that just yet, since I've been mayor over the last eight years. Because most people see it as if the neighbor has junk piled there, and they've got trash on the front porch, and the porch is collapsing, and there's an abandoned vehicle with no license plate and a boat, they're probably thinking it has an impact on the value of their property. And it may be fun to sit here and say, well, it doesn't matter what they think. Well, that's just not the real world we live in. Everyone wants their va, property to look good. Well, no, they don't, but everyone wants their property to be a value, valuable. Except at tax time, and then none of us... at tax time, and then none of us want a high value on our property, but.
But I have a hard time believing that a boat, any boat, any, any camper sitting in somebody's yard, you know, people talk about all the time, it's gonna decrease the property value. And you and I talked.
I know, we did.
My, my opinion, and my thought would be, that I think having increased restrictions on property usage has more in effect, has more of an effect on property value, and I know you don't agree with that, because you point to a million-dollar neighborhood and say.
I didn't point to any neighborhood. Oh, I guess I did. What I told him is, it obviously does have an impact on property values, because, let's face it, the places that have the highest home values are the ones that are most restrictive. We are not that, and as far as I'm concerned, I don't wanna be that, because I, I often, they tease me in the office about, I just want it to be the Wild West. And the reason why they say that is because I do believe freedom should rule. Now, we gotta use common sense when we're saying freedom should rule, but I am not in favor of in putting into place some restrictive code. But let me tell you, we're getting cries more and more from people in this community wanting us to do just that. They all wonder why the city of Ashland doesn't have a property maintenance code, why the paint's flaking off the neighbor's house and no one's making them do anything about it, while the porch is falling in and no one's making them do anything about it, why there's a tarp on the roof because there's a hole, and they have to look at the flapping blue tarp. Let me tell you, you can say those things as you live on Forest Dale in a nice area where everyone's lawns and everything are kept, it's not that way all across the city.
I don't think it is. However, it's, it's very, it, you say you don't wanna be restrictive, this is very restrictive.
Well, you know what? It hasn't caused too much pain in the last several decades or generations here in Ashland.
Well, one thing I'd like to say, I wanna say thank you.
You're welcome.
Because at least we can park them in our backyard. They have not took them that way.
Yeah, that's right.
That's why we're here. They have not took it away, yet.
Yes.
And we don't wanna take anything away, I can promise you.
All right, I paid seven thousand dollars last year to add on to my driveway for my boat. Are you gonna tell me that it's all right to leave my boat there as long as none of my neighbors complain about it?
I'm not gonna tell you that.
Where's the driveway at? Where's the driveway? It goes all the way to the end of the property.
And I use it most of the winter, I fish about every weekend, and no one has ever complained about my boat, and that's why.
Mike, I'm pretty sure your boat doesn't remain in your driveway seventy-two hours, rain or shine. You're out there. And if your neighbors complain, we have to address it. However, you, knowing you, I doubt that you would be fi, found in violation, because most days, your boat's not even there. Am I right?
Right.
Okay.
See, do you get violation? Take them for ride.
That's right.
Hey, oh, yes, go ahead, sir.
I, I don't have a copy, there wasn't any more.
Yeah, you're welcome to see it.
But, um, I had researched a year, last year, year before, um, on some of the requirements, and, and from what I could find, there was language on eight feet, ten feet.
You're right.
From the side, from the rear.
Yep.
If you have a fence, there's no language on the height of the fence, or the type of the fence, it could be chain link, is it privacy metal? You know, some fences even are falling over.
Yes.
The city fence.
Yes.
Is falling over onto other, damaged my fence, and nobody's do, I mean.
You'll have to tell me where that's at, I don't know where that's at.
All over, you're correct, sir. You know, uh, there, there's an abandoned house, has not been occupied in five years, rodents, mold, it's not safe to enter. There's, there's, there has been squatters, uh, previously in the, in the neighborhood, and, and it's a, it's a safety.
Absolutely.
Issue. And initially, when it's not raised, I actually kinda thought, maybe it is a, a safety thing. Um, you know. So, is that language in here?
Not in this section, in the fence that is covered.
RVs, mobile homes, you know, a mobile home being a, a home that is mobile, does that consider recreational vehicle?
This.
Is a side-by-side a recreational vehicle? If I don't register my Jeep and I drive it off-road only, it's for my recreation, is that a recreational vehicle that I can't park in my driveway? Because it's not reg, that's why I license everything and, and insure everything, uh, to try to be in compliance. Um, so, yeah, where does it end? And, and what is, I mean, I think what brings us here today is better clarification and understanding.
Exactly. And that is the good part about Mr. Schlosser pursuing this, is it did force the city's hand to take a look at it, the law director's office reviewed it, and have determined that we do need to spell out more clearly. Now, I talked to him about this idea of, well, how specific do you get? And he said that he absolutely feels this language is adequate, because how would you possibly list ever kind of trailer that, and what's on that trailer, and so on? And even this argument that will define trailer. I asked Mr. Schlosser when he was in the office, I said, he said, well, what kind of trailer? I said, well, what does your boat sit on? Trailer. That's why always in the past, it hasn't been an issue, you're not allowed to have a recreational vehicle on that trailer for a length of time. So, I think we all know what a trailer is, and if you've got a trailer with your lawnmower on it, or you have mulch on your trailer, no one's heading out to arrest you, or find you guilty of a misdemeanor, without going to court or fining you.
But how come the, when you guys checked into these laws? How come, how come the law in the front yard, that's fine? But like the gentleman said, you know, he ended up putting in a long driveway.
Oh, yes.
Park his boat. What's wrong with that? Seriously.
Well, evidently, nothing is, because I don't think he's got a letter.
Well, no, but I'm saying, what's wrong with that? I mean, how come the law, when they, he checked the law, how come, and he rewrote the law? How come he didn't rewrite it for people to be able to park in their driveway? Them vehicles, every one of them that leaves out of that, their tax, their license.
Uh, if I could, the law was written in nineteen sixty-six.
Okay, after no law.
And we, we believe, at least that's the indication we have. And it was back then, uh, I believe, more geared toward motor home, or mo, mobile homes, which were considered or called trailers. If you have, and, and the law was not designed to create pain for our citizens, that they couldn't have a boat, or a camper, or some recreational vehicle. It was designed to protect our citizens from someone starting a junkyard, or a boat graveyard, and we have them. I, I've seen it. I've seen six boats, not on trailers, in somebody's yard. I've seen a huge sailboat sitting in the driveway for over two years, had countless calls from neighbors. That's what the law is designed for, and as the mayor said, we're reasonable people, we're not heavy-handed about this. It's gonna take a complaint of some sort before action is taken, because no one has time to police the fact that your boat, Mike, has sat in its driveway for more than seventy-two hours. Uh, truly, that, let's just get down to realism here.
But what's, what's the problem with them setting them in the drive?
Again, you, 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 you have to, well, if you'll let me finish, if you'll let me finish, the, the law was designed to protect you, and you talk about, and all of you are here with the look in your eye like the city government is infringing on our private property rights.
Right. Well, that's, that's what you're.
Think of your neighbors for a moment. You're infringing on their private property rights, and maybe they don't like to see a, a forty-foot camper in their dr, in your driveway, that they can't even look down the street and see what's coming. For example, or, or a boat graveyard that does detract from values. Let's, let's, uh, maintain some order here. But, but a, a boat graveyard is not an attractive sight. A, a rusted-out camper that somebody has aged and, and, uh, doesn't know what to do with, because it costs money to have those toys. I have a boat, it stays in my garage when I'm not using it.
Not everybody got a garage.
I realize that. But the fact is that these items come with a cost, whether it's to store, to run, to insure, to license. Believe me, I know. And you have to consider that when you buy them, and when you own them. There's a cost to your recreation. And again, it's not to create pain for you, it's to protect those throughout the city against infringement on, hey, I bought a property here, but I, I'm losing value because there's a junkyard beside me, or somebody wants to move their mother-in-law into a camper in the driveway. That's not allowed, for example. So, I hope you can accept that answer.
Well, no, because it's our driveway, it is our property.
But you live in.
That we pay tax.
But you live in a city that requires some conformance, uh, for the protection of, and benefit, uh, of the general welfare of all.
I'm asking why the law, why we cannot park in our driveway out front? I mean, come on, we're giving you, we're giving you our front of our yard.
I heard you.
Didn't you give our driveway like this gentleman's saying?
Not when it comes to campers and boats and.
Why?
I just told you why.
That's not, that's.
You're, you're infringing on your neighbor's rights. So, I'm sorry, I can't.
We don't want the law, that's what he's saying, we don't want it.
We don't want that law.
That law's been on the books, and that law's not going away.
It's made, isn't it?
The law's not, the law is not going away. We're adding language to the existing law to clarify.
But, but why? Why, why wasn't it voted on? Who gives you the right?
Sir, I wasn't on council in nineteen sixty-six.
Who gives you the right today to do it? To take away our right.
Well, I would think you'd want some, some clarification.
Who gives you guys the right?
No, and no, and it's the same policy that's been on the books. Let's face it, there isn't a city you're going to go to that doesn't have rules and ordinances to dictate what you can and cannot do in some neighborhoods.
I understand that.
So, but Ned, yeah, I understand.
Why can't we, you guys, take away our front yard? But our driveway, really, come on, everybody.
It's not about your driveway as much as it is that big camper that will be sitting there, and that big pontoon boat that will be covered.
We pay good amount of money.
I believe you did, I know you do.
You pay good money.
Absolutely, you do. Absolutely.
And then now you're, and we pay property tax.
Yes.
On that.
Lots of it.
What you're saying, we take part on that property.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you revise?
I think there should be a differentiation between, where does the driveway stop at the end of the house and the backyard start?
It's the side yard and the front yard, and I've raised this with the law director, should it actually say driveway? And he said, when you say front yard and side yard, that includes everything that's in the front of the house and everything that's on the side of the house.
To the end of the house.
Yes.
End of the house. So, from their own back, it's backyard.
I mean, I don't know for certain, I would have to rely on someone else.
If your boat is past the end of the house, it's in the backyard.
It's not past the side yard.
The side yard.
Not that.
But anyways.
I was told the city, uh, recognizes a corner lot as two front yards.
Yes, when it comes to a fence, absolutely.
I, I have a, I have a corner, and my driveway's in my backyard, does that mean I can park a vehicle there for a recreational trailer?
I don't know.
It's a backyard.
I have to, I have to see.
Yeah, maybe.
Possibly.
I don't know without seeing them.
I think.
That's where it should be allowed to park in a garage.
Thank you for being here, and, uh, can you at least add in this, uh, statute that we can park it in the driveway?
That would defeat the purpose. It hasn't been like that for the last decades, and so it would do, be, it would truly be changing our policy here in the city.
Well, that's what I would change.
Yep.
You guys are adding something right now.
Yep, and I'm gonna tell you, I don't think that that would be met with great enthusiasm from everyone. I don't at all.
But it's, it's, it's common sense, folks. Behind your house is your backyard. Okay, you got a front door and a back door. It's where your back door is.
Yep.
I, I can't be any more clear than that, truly.
Around the corner, I understand.
Yeah, I understand, behind your house. If, if you, if it's visible from a, another side, okay, well, you have a challenge there. But I don't think any neighbor's gonna take issue with the fact that it's behind your house. Yes, sir?
So, you got a question there?
So, we got, on Steel Avenue have no access.
Yes.
Our rear backyard. How do we get to that? Are we supposed to trespass onto the city schools to end up getting to the access?
Good question.
Yeah, I don't know where your lot is, so I don't know.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of us can't get to our backyard.
Yeah, there's.
And it's, it's like, okay, we have a backyard, how do we get there? We got a driveway.
City schools went there, the, it's got taken away, we have no opportunity to get to the backyard.
I have a feeling, and I don't know your situation, but I have a feeling if it's still accessible, but you just simply have to travel through the school's property, and there's no building or baseball field or something like that blocking the way, I have a feeling they'd probably let you get through there. Well, I mean, I understand that, understand that, yep. So, but is there anything else that anyone, any new thing that hasn't been mentioned?
I guess, you know, the opening of this meeting, um, there was commentary on the greater good of our community.
Okay.
And so, yes, obviously, there are folks here who feel, you know, we're being more restricted, um.
But nothing is changing.
So.
Now, let's, that's where we've gotta be clear, no policy's changing, but.
If you don't mind, I.
Yes, yes.
When you say, you know, consider your neighbors, they don't wanna look at this stuff. No, let's, let's give it a vote?
Yeah, why don't?
We're all, we're all here because of this gentleman.
Yes, and there's twenty-three to twenty-five thousand people living in this city at nine thousand-plus residents, and we have how many?
I don't know.
What do we have? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen?
None of these people.
We have under thirty people here.
None of these people would be here if it wasn't for the fact that I went on to chatter and.
Exactly.
That, that this meeting was gonna be held, and this issue was gonna be here. This would've, you wouldn't have had two people in this room, and you would've passed it without hearing from us at all.
And do you realize, Mr. Schlosser, no one's life would've been any different than it was yesterday?
Yes, they would've been.
It would not have. The policy that had been in place for a generation or more before you got here would be in place just as it was for our moms and dads, our grandmas and grandpas, and our great-grandmas and grandpas. So, you're the one who's brought it to our attention, and we appreciate that, because now, hopefully, no one will ever have to dispute that a boat is counted in this policy.
Thank you for being so, um.
Truly.
Caustic.
I don't know what that means, but thank you.
You don't know what caustic means?
Well, I, I would, don't know what you're referring to, but anyways, that's all.
The laws and law is what it is.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's gonna stay that way for.
Yes. Nothing has changed, and that's where I'm sorry that you were all misled by social media, that we were taking away more rights, and that we were doing something that was so dramatically was so dramatically different. That simply is not true.
Andrew, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You and I met-
Correct.
When we went through the eleven fifty, the ordinance eleven fifty-five, and then the definition of trailer, eleven thirty-one point dot sixty-three, did you see anything in here which would've indicated that any of us would've been violating an ordinance?
You're going to the same thing, I'd be with my car.
I know that, but I mean, but because-
As the mayor has said, there, there's a lack of clarity in how the ordinance reads now, there's some confusion. That confusion is separate and apart from how we have historically enforced the law, and this clears up that confusion. But, I mean, what that ordinance says is quite clear.
So, why don't we just get rid of the ordinance? A lot of us, and we're right here just talking about it, we can sit there and do a vote on it to get rid of the ordinance completely with the city of Ashland?
If we got rid of the ordinance, we, as a city, would have nothing to point to if your neighbors started a boat graveyard right beside your house. Is that what you want? Or decided to pull in a mobile home or a big camper in their driveway where their mother-in-law was going to live because they didn't have the funds for a nursing home?
I'll just-
You get it, I'm sure. I, I can paint a half a dozen different pictures, but if, if you won't be quiet and let me speak, you'll be removed from this meeting. Do you understand me?
First amendment violation.
Do you understand me?
Oh, I'm understanding it.
Disruption in a public meeting is not allowed or tolerated, period. Thank you. Sir, you had a question?
I'm a rule follower.
As am I.
And rule followers like clarity as much as we like fairness. And I think that this ordinance is worth more discussion about the nineteen sixties terminology that's used that may or may not be effective today. As the ordinance is written, the scope of it places many rule-following Ashlanders in jeopardy. You have brought up the need to prevent boat graveyards, eyesores, and if that's what we wanna do, and I, I don't think anyone in here would defend that, but what the ordinance should be written as then, it should be written in a way that prevents boat graveyards and eyesores, and it should be clear so that the rule followers may abide by the law, not break the law, and so that the law is not subject to the random, capricious feelings of a neighbor. And the reason I think that is because I did a simple drive within three-quarters of mile of my house from Summit Avenue to West Main Street, Liloq, and Sharon, and in that distance, there were no less than thirteen vehicles that I recorded that would be out of compliance with this ordinance, and yet of which I don't think any of us would've checked.
No complaints.
The scope of recreational vehicle leaves the city open to discussions, even perhaps liability in their determination of what that is if it is not spelled out in the ordinance. And I would call, I would ask the city council to review what it is they're actually trying to prevent and write the ordinance in a way that does that clearly without jeopardizing other people who want to comply with an armed problem.
Yeah, you know, ninety-nine out of a hundred people will do what all you folks do. You have your recreational vehicle, you take care of it, it parks in your driveway, you keep it cleaned. I don't know what you do in the wintertime, store it, I assume, I don't know, but it's that one out of a hundred that we're, that this ordinance is designed for, for the benefit of all, and that's what this is about. It's that one out of a hundred that, that we're concerned with. And if we don't have an ordinance like this that already exists, we're just clarifying, do you understand? We're clarifying. We're not creating a new law, we're just clarifying the existing law, and-
I would say not clear enough. I would say clarify even further.
Okay.
Prevent what you want, but to allow what is not a problem. That would be my, my request here, Steve.
All right. Well, there again, that's what it's designed for, and here we are.
If I may, with all due respect, you had just said ninety-nine percent of us good citizens park our vehicles in our driveways, recreational vehicles. We all use these as recreation, and that's very important, too, for the health of the community.
Sure.
To be recreative.
You know, there is, like, when you talk these old laws, nineteen sixty and stuff, if anybody really searching them, they're crazy. I'm gonna mention one law I shouldn't mention because all of us could get in trouble. You know, if you walked downtown in nineteen sixties, if you walked downtown with a doughnut and looked at a cop, you would be arrested. That is a law in Ashland. You're also going by that law to this law, so it's-
You'll excuse me if I say I'm not familiar.
Yeah, well, that's what, we looked up a long time ago, some of these old stupid laws.
All right.
I just wanna add something. My son. When it comes down to it, the average person that lives in this city absolutely has no idea about finding out about something like this. Our mailers do not tell us that we're not allowed to do that. If we come from Texas, I come back from Texas, happened later before, but when I went to look for a house, my mailer did not tell me I couldn't do this, this, and this. I'm sorry, that's gonna fall on somebody because honestly, you guys don't put it out where we really can see it. I'm not on YouTube, I'm not on Facebook, I'm not on TikTok. This is where you guys put this stuff. You've gotta find a better way to let the residents know that this, like, this even exists.
Everything, everything is online, ma'am.
None of us knew. You know, I'm eighty, I don't know, some of you are sixty and seventy. Give us an always put in before, you know, whether you thought, or thought about getting this kind of equipment. So, I'm just saying, you need to do something more about getting it. When you pass something, just don't give us a number and say, well, this is what. It really doesn't-
If I can say one last final thing. Four to five years ago, you can look in your books, my wife said her RV was sitting on Duff Drive on a hillside. City got ahold of her, told her she had to move it. It was a law.
Somebody, someone must've called.
Told her she had to move it. So, you know, she's elder. We moved it out to my in-laws. Nothing about it. But myself, as she's mentioning, myself, I'm like, what? I ain't never heard of that. And I'm assuming because on Duff Drive, if you look down through there, her driveway went on a big steep hill. And I'm thinking, well, maybe because the children are walking down, and that thing could go down and get a child. Because I wasn't aware of this law. So, yes, as she's saying, you do need to let everybody know the law is the law, or-
And there, but there are, there are so many. I mean, we've got zoning codes, we've got housing issues, there's, there's literally volumes, and so that's why when there is a violation, I think that's probably why you're given such a lengthy window to rectify it, and even though it's been stated that you're guilty when you receive that letter, you are not guilty, but you could be found guilty in a court if you didn't act within those thirty days, but you'd still get a chance to make your case before the judge would decide that. Yes.
What does it matter if you park in your driveway or behind your house? Your neighbor's still gonna see it. So, what's the difference?
Yep.
By ass.
Yeah.
I got, I have a scenario, I think.
Okay.
So- And I, I was subject to this. I had a camper. I ended up selling it, not because of this rule, but I had a camper, and I, I think I had it at my house for two weeks before the first time I got a verbal warning that, hey, you're not allowed to do that. So, I had to go find a place to, you know, a guy with a farm that let me pay him a couple bucks to park it out behind his barn. But that's, that's not, the, the point is, I, I, to your point, so, we have all different size lots in this town, right? And so, let's say, I have a sixty-foot driveway, right? And if I get a forty-foot RV, you know, and I can't quite get it, I can't back it up tight to my house, right? I can't put it against my house, so I gotta leave it out a little bit, and now, when my neighbor pulls down their driveway and they look down Smith Road and people are driving fifty-five mile an hour up Smith Road, which we've heard plenty of complaints about, and they go ahead and pull out, and smack, they get hit, because, so it's, so people are like, well, it's just aesthetics. Well, it's not aesthetics because there's people with thirty-five foot driveways that'll buy a thirty-five foot camper, and the hitch is just inside the curb, you know? But how can I, how can we write an ordinance for that? Well, if your driveway's sixty feet, you can have a thirty-foot camper, and if your driveway's twenty feet, you can have a ten-foot camper. It, it, it gets so convoluted.
Absolutely.
And then how many campers can you have? Can I fill my entire driveway with campers? Or can I fill my entire driveway and front yard with boats? You know?
These people that have all of this, I'll tell them, not like one person with one boat or one RV.
But you, you can't carve out this, this little bit of the law for that. You, you have to protect everyone from the one or the two.
Is there not an ordinance that says something that you can't block line of sight? I'm pretty sure that ordinance would cover that. And then-
Could be.
You should, what, there is-
You couldn't park over the sidewalk, but-
There's no sidewalks on Smith Road.
Oh, that's true.
So, you can't use that, because there's roads that don't have sidewalks.
That's right.
There's roads that don't have curbs, so you can't-
Your camper's in your backyard, right?
Correct.
You should point that out.
Yeah.
But is there not, see, my issue is, I just bought a house.
Yes.
I have not moved into it yet, and I did not know about this law. I have a camper, and I can't get into my backyard. So, now, I've just paid X and amount of dollars, and then now I already worried about my bills, and now I have fine storage. Because I can't, I don't wanna use my front yard. I don't think anything should be in anybody's front yard. But I have a side, I can't use a side, can't use my driveway.
Sir, I asked that question to our engineer before I came here, and what he said was, yes, you are correct. You can pack, what, what are the options for that guy that asked me tonight? You know, I've got this sitting in my driveway, what do I do with it? What are my options? Backyard, storage, garage? That's about it, according to the ordinance? An ordinance that's been on the books since-
But an ordinance that you said was for mobile homes.
Well-
You said, that's what you said.
No, I said if you read it-
For trailers.
Yeah, trailers, yeah. Trailers.
But that was a trailer in nineteen sixty.
Correct.
That's what we've been using.
Yep.
Is a mobile home.
Well, it's under the heading of, of mobile homes. I understand.
It was in that section.
It was in that section.
No.
But-
Definition section.
Right, and it was in that section. I understand. Your, your particular scenario would, would apply to that, but that's why we're clarifying the language, so that we can let people know, hey, the boat you've got sitting in your driveway for six months out of the year, if your neighbors complain, you're gonna have an issue.
But from what you said, that's not what the ordinance said. It said the ordinance was mobile homes.
No, I said, I said it seemed to be, by my interpretation, which I'm not a lawyer, clearly geared toward mobile homes at the time, but it, but it was, you know, the blanket statement was trailers.
The thing is, we can argue about these words until we're blue in the face. The policy was what I described. It's been being enforced for generations, but now it'll be very clear. You may not have known that it existed, but it did, and there are people that did know it existed because they got a letter and they took care of the situation. So, we can argue about whether we have it comprehensive enough, which you can't get it comprehensive enough, because there's no way you're gonna know every scenario. And this is why this language is pretty simple, so that anyone that might look at it online should be able to interpret it as, okay, that applies to boats, RVs, and trailers. It can be there three days, and if I'm going to keep it longer, I have to put it in my back line.
Or pull it around the block and put it back in.
Or store it, something to that effect.
I guess the biggest thing, like I said earlier, things like not, you know, doing our backyard.
No, absolutely. Well, no one's gonna take your yard.
And how long, long does this law stays as is?
Yes.
And not planning on-
Yes.
Rewriting this law.
Do you, do you think we're all taking great joy in even passing the law that's already in the books? I don't think anyone will be actively searching to rewrite.
Yes. In the back, you had a question?
Yeah, I've heard a lot about the boat graveyard.
Now, with all due respect, that's his term.
That's my term.
That has nothing to do with this ordinance, but-
It makes sense. I mean, I know they're out there, they're, they're in disrepair, they're sitting on the round, they're full of mosquitoes and water and everything else. If you put them in your backyard, is it okay? Is that what you want then? I mean, it's, it's a boat or a boat-
It says one.
That's a good question.
It says one. It says one in the ordinance.
Does it?
Yes. It, it does.
I always look at if it's a licensed vehicle, have a, allow a license plate on it, it's a usable vehicle, and you're, in other words, you're gonna take care of it. If something's gonna be shooting.
Yes, yes.
Put back there and left it rot, then it's-
She's right. She is right.
Sir, it says a number three, one unoccupied recreational vehicle or trailer may be temporarily stored in the rear of your yard or any lot in a residential district provided a ten-foot setback from your property line.
And I asked, well, temporarily, and the lawyer told me that the reason it says temporarily is because it can't say permanent, because that would suggest that family could move in.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I'd like to just mention a few things. So, I'm a camper lover. I have a camper in my backyard. I have a camper, thirty-five foot, three slide-out camper. I love to go camping. It's in my backyard, nobody can see it, it's tucked away. We bought that property that we have because we wanted to have a camper. So, we made sure it was big enough to get our camper in the backyard. But that being said, an hour and a half yesterday and an hour today, I drove around the city everywhere, and like you, I seen campers everywhere. Most of them were fine. The ones that were not, I seen one property that has three campers in their backyard. The, the weeds are about as tall as their camper. The campers are green. I'm pretty sure people are living in it. I will probably have to report that, because that is a camper graveyard. I mean, that's what they have in their backyard. I don't want that, and I'm sure their neighbor that has a very nice house really probably doesn't appreciate looking at that every day. So, they need to get those out. Now, can they have one temporarily? And they weren't licensed, so they're not moving them. They're- They're living there, and that was not just one. I probably found many of those, and a lot of times at the side of the house, they kinda made a driveway. It wasn't a driveway, and the weeds have not, and the grass has not been mowed. So, then we are getting complaints about, hey, they need to mow their yard. They're mowing right up to it. They don't wanna mow close to their boat or camper or whatever. So, unfortunately, those people are why we're here today.
Correct.
Yes, and why this ordinance was put in place probably in nineteen sixty-seven.
Yes.
So.
Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome.
Yes. Sir, you had a question?
Okay, so, again, you know, I'm sorry, you were referring, you were citing three. I don't have visibility of that. You said it's really easy to find this information. Can we pull it up on the monitor for everybody to read?
I didn't say it was easy to find the information.
And can, is there a way that we can have that viewable maybe for, you should counsel me, please?
Mr. Chairman, we could be here all night for a group of twenty, twenty-five, or thirty people.
We're, we're not going to pour over the ordinances as they're written for the benefit of the group here. We have a representative, representative government, we're elected officials to represent our constituents.
I'm aware of three different situations in my neighborhood where the violator was informed, and they said, oh, I did not know, I'm sorry, and they immediately complied.
And that is usually the response.
There was no issue.
That is usually the response.
Usually the response, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I wasn't aware, and they immediately complied.
No change to the current law, just adding language that clarifies, that's all.
Current policy.
Okay, so can you add license to campers in your backyard?
There is a license.
It says it has to be licensed.
We do reference licenses in the ordinance.
That's what I was saying, because if, if that's the case, like she found three without license, those automatics should be- Correct, they should, correct.
That, that's a legitimate, yeah.
And it should be licensed.
Yeah.
And temporarily, move summer.
Hey, thank you, Tracy. Thank you, guys, for being here. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, yeah. All right. Thank you, thank you for speaking up. Yes, thank you, truly.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yep. Hey. You're welcome, thank you. Hey, you're welcome.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
See ya. So, we'll finish this ordinance and then move to the other.
Yep, yep.
No, we'll act on this.
Yeah, we gotta finish acting on this ordinance.
So, hearing no-
Thank you for being here.
Does council have any further discussion on this particular ordinance?
I remain unconvinced that there needs to be changed. This is the way it should be written, and I approve of this policy, the, this ordinance where it clarifies the policy that already existed.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Anyone else?
I would just like to say, I, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I had many people reach out to me via email and phone, and I, I appreciate that. We do wanna hear your opinion, and so I just wanna say that, you know, we, we don't take these things lightly. We read them, we do our homework, so, you know, we wanna do what's best for all in the city.
And truly, Mr. Schloss- And truly, Mr. Schlosser, I will tell you that I do think it ends up being a good thing because now I have a feeling most everyone will know the policy on storing boats and campers in the city of Ashland. And we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have done this without you.
And this and this this ordinance will continue to be one that's very subjective, the only enforcement is a complaint. I mean, the ordinance should be an ordinance. Somebody should be driving around saying, ticket, 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 or or it, move it, move it, move it, move it. There should be none. It's either none or all. You can't just rely on people complaining. Because what if I put my back in and the neighbor who complained moves? But I bet I'll be on the radar from now on. There's no doubt in my mind, because you've been out my neighborhood in the last two weeks or so, haven't you?
Uh, two days ago, three days ago, yes.
So I'm on the radar, just because I happen to take up, you know.
Well, don't you fear, because we're not coming after you.
And that works that way with all of the laws on the books, including the tall weeds. We we cannot possibly be out there. You know, oh, my goodness, that's twelve inches. No, we rely on people that live next door that if if it's tall, they're gonna call us or call me or call the mayor's office, and we're gonna send somebody out and look at it. That's how this process kind of works. I mean, so.
And as I said, in the majority of these situations that I'm aware of, people didn't even know because once it was pointed out, they complied without issue because they simply were uninformed or unaware. And so apologetically applied, complied without issue.
Including our own council member.
Yes.
And I complied also.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Complied, and like I said at the beginning, it just had little to do with the fact that I was asked to move my trailer. It had more to do with the fact that I'm guilty of a misdemeanor.
You're not guilty.
You can say that all you want, but in this letter, it says I am. Now, okay, one suggestion, then.
Change the letter?
That has nothing to do. Change the letter and say, if you're found guilty in a court of law, this will be the consequence.
And we could do that. We could absolutely do that.
That's easy enough.
Absolutely.
I think that's what it should say.
This letter's gone out, and people just get intimidated and bullied into moving something, but it really doesn't apply.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Understand.
Move on.
Yeah.
All right, if counsel has no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve on the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Good to meet you.
Good to be back.
Second. I'll second your.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
I didn't think I should make them all.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Ordinance sixty dash twenty-five.
All right. It is eight oh eight. We have a public hearing scheduled for seven twenty. We'll now open the hearing. This will be the second budget hearing for this particular item. So Larry, I'll turn it over to you. Evening.
Good evening.
The budget that you have before you has had a few changes slightly from what I thought I was giving you in the first hearing. Not much.
Who's talking?
Nobody can hear. Okay.
I apologize to you. I did not hear. My microphone is off, so I'm sorry. The tax budget that you have before you this evening has changed slightly, not in the revenue side, but on some of the expenditure lines in an effort to better define where we believe that we may go in two thousand twenty-six. Again, this is the tax budget. It is not the appropriations. It is the tax budget and the beginning of the two thousand twenty-six appropriations. The main purpose of this budget is to establish millage amounts so that the auditor, the county auditor can collect those millages against our properties so that the city can receive that money in an effort to help it operate in two thousand twenty-six. It has all of the operating funds of the city currently and a few capital improvement funds that we believe will finish in this year, but may have to have some additional recordings based off of grant proceeds that may not come until the end of this calendar year, as the mayor had alluded to with the Signal program. How that will start this year, but it has a eight-month delivery for some of the equipment to be installed. So some of those funds carry over from one calendar year to another to account for the expenditures and the grant revenues and those items as they work their way through processes of other departments or other funding mechanisms. Today, the general fund is proposed to take in and expend about nineteen million dollars in two thousand twenty-six. The special revenue funds, about seventeen million, two hundred and forty-three thousand. We will continue to retire debt, and hopefully we will be considering issuing of some additional debt in two thousand twenty-six, which is not accounted for at this point because those numbers are still being completed. At this point, we will retire about six million dollars in in operating, or excuse me, overhead debt for the fire station, the wastewater and wastewater plant, as well as some of the utility infrastructure that we have incurred debt on to install. Capital improvements projects, we anticipate there'll be at least seven million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in capital projects that will happen in two thousand twenty-six. Some of it will be our resurfacing program, which you'll hear more about later. But along with that, some installation of other utilities in an effort to service our constituents. The enterprise funds are the water and sewer, stormwater, and sanitation departments. That will equate to about fifteen million dollars in operating expenses in two thousand twenty-six. Internal service funds such as the income tax collection and and items like that will be the twenty-one million. And then the fiduciary funds, which are just trust funds really to pay for hospitalization that our employees have taken above and beyond what the city has offered to them in an effort for them to pay those premiums that they have chosen to to take. Altogether, it's eighty-eight million, fifty-four thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. And I have no idea the thirty-two cents. I just can't believe that I I'm not that close and not that good. But anyways, again, this is a tax budget. It's the best crystal ball I can get at this time and and at this place. It takes into consideration the economy, income tax, revenue, outstanding outside sources of information that we try to collect and read and and try to invest into this. It is a tax budget. It is not the appropriations. We will not be spending any of this money. It is clearly only to begin the process for twenty-six and to allow us to set those millages. At the completion of this, we will submit it to the county auditor and the budget commission. From there, then, they will go and review it. They also hold a public hearing, just as we do. And they will invite us to understand or to explain the budget to them as best we can. There, from there, they will send the ordinance back to us so that you folks will be able to consider and adopt those millage rates that really are set by this this project here. And then from there, we will begin the process of adopting or working on the twenty-six appropriations. It's it's the best guessed estimate at this time, and I hate to use that word, but that's about what it is based on you're passing a budget in July. We have a lot of what impacts this is the cash carryovers. At the end of the year, if a fund or a activity has appropriated X amount of dollars, and they haven't spent all that money, then it goes back into that fund so that it stays in that fund, excuse me, so that it can be spent the following year. So that is another factor. It's a estimate based off of current spending levels and an estimate of what we believe that we may have at the end of two thousand twenty-five as far as cash is concerned. So that's another element of that. It it does complete this process with this hearing and the adoption of it. Again, it is just the tax budget.
And it's my understanding, Larry, that once we submit this to the county, we're required to report to them any large windfall or major change to this for their purposes as well. Is that correct?
That is correct. The county will take this document and formulate the beginning of the Certificate of Estimated Resources for two thousand twenty-six. At the end of this calendar year, I must also submit a report to the county auditor of those cash balances that I just referred to. That is also taken and added into that Certificate of Estimated Resources. From there, then they send me a estimated, completed estimated resource of spendable appropriations monies for two thousand twenty-six. The only way that gets changed is if we anticipate, let's say, an additional grant for something several hundred dollars that we did not anticipate in this product, then we have to write a letter to the county auditor saying, hey, we've we we want to change our estimates based off of this or based off of that.
Yeah.
It works the other way as well. If we don't receive as much money, they will systematically reduce the spendable amount.
Sure.
By doing that, then we have to, from there, then we can adopt a spending appropriations for twenty-six.
I see.
And hopefully, it'll go rather quickly. I I don't want to entice the mayor too much because I think I spoiled him a little this year by passing it too soon. I should have dragged my feet for a month or so. No, I would not do that. But anyways, but that's kind of where we're at. And I'll be more than happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, have any questions? I think we've been through this once already.
This is the second public hearing.
So we'll open it up to the general public, our audience. If anyone would have a question regarding the tax budget for Mr. Paxton or the counsel, you're more than welcome to step up to the podium and address counsel.
I have a problem with the wording.
Good.
Very good.
Thank God.
Thank you. Always good to get feedback.
So do I.
There's a whole lot of wording.
Yes. All right. Well, seeing none, then, we'll close the hearing, and Larry, we appreciate your good work, always.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that will end our public hearing item. Moving on, then, with the agenda, I'm going to jump back to item A to process accordingly. It'll be an ordinance adopting the tax budget of the city of Ashland, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand twenty-six, submitting the same to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Steve, you need to pass on the first reading.
I'm sorry?
You need to pass on the first reading.
Oh, I'll be the, yes.
I did that on order, didn't I? Move.
Move to, uh.
You did non-reading in full.
Yes.
We need to pass on the first reading.
Oh, forgive me. Yes, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move move to approve on the first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
And again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye. Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-five.
And we have an ordinance authorizing the assignment of a community reinvestment area tax incentive agreement with Terra SPK.
Yes.
SPK Hospitality LLC, as authorized by ordinance number sixty-one dash fifteen to Terra SPK one zero eight LLC for the remainder of the term and upon the same terms and conditions of the original community reinvestment area agreement, so authorized by ordinance number sixty-one dash fifteen. Is there a motion for non-reading in full?
Move for non-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
This particular ordinance involves the Hampton Inn out on US two fifty. Back in two thousand and fifteen, the city council at that time, which I don't know that any of us were here, I might have been the only council member here at that time. But in two thousand and fifteen, the city council approved a sixty percent tax abatement for twelve years for the construction of the Hampton Inn. The owner at that time was Mr. Patel, and the name of the LLC was Terra SPK Hospitality. Their LLC is changing its name to Terra SPK one zero eight LLC. Same owner, just changing the name of their LLC. But because the LLC's name is changing, it requires that the council approve the transfer so that they can get the remaining three years that are left on their tax abatement. So it's not a new tax abatement. It is just transferring it to a different owner, although we know the owner's the same person. It's just they've renamed their LLC.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Ordinance sixty-two dash twenty-five.
Then we have an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-one dash ten relative to community reinvestment area tax incentives. Is there a motion for non-reading in full?
Move for non-reading in full.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Some of you probably already heard me save because I think I actually mentioned it during this year's State of the City address. But eight years ago, when I first took over in the role of mayor, and many of you became council members for the first time, one of the biggest challenges was trying to lure developers to our area to build housing. Everyone that we sat down and talked with would go through all the reasons why it didn't make financial sense for them to build in our market that was untested at that time, that hadn't seen any apartment developments or home subdivisions for decades. And so after being turned down a variety of times, we went to work to try to figure out what incentive could we create to lure these developers here to help build new businesses, more apartments, condos, and homes. At that time, the council agreed to enact an incentive that basically says that if you come to the city of Ashland. you come to the city of Ashland and you build 12 or more units, whether those be single-family homes, whether those be condos, whether those be apartments, so long as you're not getting any other tax incentive from the state or from the federal government or somewhere else, you would qualify for 100% abatement for 10 years. Later, we came through and we added, or 75%, for 15 years because that was needed to close the first deal. Well, tonight, we sit here eight years later, and quite honestly, we are having no problem attracting the developers to our area. In fact, I would say to you that you've heard me say before, there are constant calls asking if we have any land available or if we could help someone find a location to do a project here in our community. So the incentive worked. I'll be honest with you, if you recall, when this incentive was first passed, the following Friday after we passed it, I think it was in 2019, don't hold me to that, but it was several years ago, when we passed it, we passed it on a Tuesday night. By Friday, the first developer from Columbus was here in the office with his team, and he had heard about it through another guy we were working with on the property where Ohio Health sits on their project. And he came up, listened to the story, told him all the reasons why Ashland was the place he needed to be here, and told him all about this incentive, which is what got his attention and made him come and sit down with us, and he decided to invest. And that's how we got the district out on George Road. 192 apartments, market rate, and I believe it was an investment somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 million now. I've dealt with so many numbers over the year, I can't remember exactly what his initial investment was, but I want you to consider something. He came and did that, and that was so successful that it showed other developers that you could make the numbers work here, and that stimulated Arrow's Landing. And from there, now we're working with a number of different developers. In fact, we'll have one more to talk about tonight on the agenda. But this was an incentive that we created to try to lure these developers to our community. Tonight, what I am asking is for you to change the language so that it says up to 100% and up to 75%. And the reason I am suggesting that is because I think now we can make a stronger case when we meet with these developers about this is a viable market and it's worthy of your investment. And this doesn't mean we still can't give people the incentive that we originally created back, I believe in 2019, but that gives us the flexibility to not give that full amount if we don't think that the project warrants it. That's a good way to put it. So that's what I'm asking, is that now it will say up to 100% and up to 75% rather than an automatic 100% or an automatic 75. So I'd appreciate your consideration.
Discussion?
No, I appreciate this language change. I appreciate that it's now a negotiation, not a boilerplate giveaway. Absolutely. And you're exactly right. We don't, we don't need to give away anymore.
Yes.
Right now.
Yes.
It's great to be in that position.
Isn't it? Isn't it? And it worked.
The concern is it might add a lot to you, to your job, and I'm concerned about that. You have a big job already.
You know, usually we're negotiating everything else, so it's just another, another aspect of the deal, I guess, to discuss, and of course, you guys will be a part of that as well. But it, I appreciate your concern, but I think we'll be fine.
All right. With that, then, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move. Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Aye.
Again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Ordinance 63-25.
Thank you very much for that.
Next, we have an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Ashland, Ohio to enter into a contract with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association for Sergeant and Lieutenants and declaring an emergency.
Move for nonreading in full.
Second.
You know, before, before, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Before the mayor starts in on his summary explanation of this ordinance, I want to clear something up that I saw online recently where someone took issue that we're passing everything as an emergency measure. All that means is that the ordinance takes effect, goes into effect immediately after passage. If we didn't pass it as an emergency measure, just for your information, it would be 30 days from now that it would take effect. No reason to hold this up. That's why we do that, just to clarify. So go ahead.
All right. Actually, letter F, which you just cited, and letter G on our agenda, both are union contracts that involve folks at the Ashland Police Division. We already passed several of these contracts early on, but we were waiting to see if there were some other items that could be successfully negotiated on behalf of our patrolmen and our sergeants and lieutenants. So tonight, though, we are bringing to you the completed negotiated contract, and basically the only change is previously, they were receiving a professional pay stipend. It ranged from $2,925 in '22?
Yeah.
And then '23, it went up to $3,925, and I believe in '24, it was $3,925. We have eliminated that stipend and divided it among the hourly pay, so it impacted the pay rate, and then gave them, offered them the same 7% that we offered all the other unions. So that's the change. Now, in the copies that you received, there are some lined out sections. Those were not negotiated during this negotiation. Those are things that were changed by MOU during the duration of the last contract. So I'm not sure if that makes sense, but they weren't negotiated this time. Those are, all that we discussed this time were the wages, and I will remind you that we usually agree to a three-year contract. This year, we agreed with our unions to do a one-year contract and reopen this fall. And the reason for that is because we just weren't comfortable negotiating what salaries might look like in 2026 before we saw how this calendar year went. Because as you might imagine, at the beginning of this year, there was a lot of uncertainty, new presidential election, there were lots of tariffs and all sorts of things going on, and so people weren't confident at that point that we'd be in a place where we could offer higher salaries.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward. Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Orderance 64-25.
All right. With that, we'll go right to ordinance G, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association. This will be for the patrolmen and declaring an emergency. Is there a motion for nonreading in full?
Move for nonreading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Again, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Again, I will second it.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Orderance 65-25.
Moving on, we have an ordinance authorizing certain land belonging to the city of Ashland, Ohio to be sold through the Community Improvement Corporation and declaring an emergency.
Move for nonreading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
I referenced in my comments about our tax incentive that we put into place to try to lure developers to our community. I referenced that later in the agenda, we would have something to talk about in that regard, and this is the agenda item. And quite honestly, this is very exciting and very significant for the future of the city. Tonight, I'm recommending to the city council to approve the sale of 30.27 acres behind the sheriff's department, between the sheriff's department and Hillcrest Drive. This is land that some might refer to as the Siler property. I'm recommending that we sell this property to Granger Property Development, who hopes to develop it into 100 to 125 market rate build-to-rent units. They will be 1,200 to 1,400 square feet in size, two to three bedrooms will be the size of each of those structures. The company will maintain ownership of all these once they build it, and they will be rented units. These are not condos that they will be selling to individuals. They take pride in holding ownership long-term of their properties to make sure that they're maintained to their high standard. And this is a great place to do this type of housing. So this would be on the Siler property behind the sheriff's department, and that land, if you're familiar with it, goes all the way behind the sheriff's department, all the way to Hillcrest Drive. And the price tag is $1 million, which would be the most we've ever received for a city property. That's over $33,000 an acre.
Nice.
All right.
Very nice. We're all familiar with that property.
Yes.
Had some discussion about this.
And that is worth pointing out. So even though I present that tonight, for months, that's been being negotiated. And at times, when you might be watching at home and you see us go into executive session or the media sees us adjourn and go into executive session, it's these types of things that we're discussing. So that is worth pointing out, that it isn't as though in two minutes, you hear my explanation and you vote on it.
Right.
Yes, so.
This has been in the works, so.
I would just say, I'm, I'm very familiar with this group. I'm not, I don't do business with them or anything like that, I'm just familiar. I drive past many of their properties on my way to and from work, and they're nice.
Yes, they are.
They're, they're, they keep their properties very nice. They will have various amenities, so they could have a pool or they could have a clubhouse. In fact, I was talking to him about what might happen to the Siler home, because that's one of the older homes in our community, and he said they could very easily expect that that could become an amenity. So maybe that's the clubhouse or something like that when it's remodeled. And incidentally, anyone who might think, well, that building should be saved, the city owns it, and let me tell you, it is not in the condition you think it is in. It doesn't look too bad from the road and from the outside, but it is, it's rough, dangerously rough on the inside. Years ago, a group, actually Bill Sample was one of the key players, and I know Scott Brown played a role in trying to raise monies to, to save it, and it just never really stuck, never got its feet off the ground, and so it has sat vacant for all those years, and it's in pretty rough shape. So hopefully, they can salvage it and restore it. So 30 acres for $1 million for new housing in the city of Ashland. And if you want to know what it might look like, if you can picture Arrow's Landing, the individual homes at Arrow's Landing, it's very similar structures, but they're connected. Maybe there's two connected here, maybe there's three connected here, maybe there's two connected here, four here if we can fit it. So it's like a, its own little community, but it, the structures look like what you see at Arrow's Landing. Probably not too far from the size, quite honestly.
Right, no.
Because they'll even have garages, and if they're 1,200 to 1,400 square feet, it's about the same size.
Yeah. Great. Well, Dennis Miller, Councilman Miller's not here this evening, but I'm, I'm sure he would be in favor of this as well.
And actually, I should have pointed that out earlier, because I told him I would. Dennis, Councilmember Dennis Miller did meet with me earlier this week before he left for his trip to go through each agenda item, and I was supposed to share with everyone, primarily those that are in the audience, but certainly with you guys, that he has gone through them, ask his questions, and he is supportive of the agenda items tonight.
I was just going to say that on his behalf, I'll ask, how soon will they get started?
Well, that's a great question. So they actually have a due diligence period of 365 days. Then they have up to three years to start construction and must be complete within five years. Now, I want you to know that their intention is, as soon as they do their due diligence and find what, how they can lay it out and so on, then they're ready to move.
Okay. All right. With that, then, is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Ordinance sixty-six dash twenty-five.
Next, we have an ordinance declaring it necessary to renew the provision of an additional one-fourth of one percent income tax to be levied for a period of five years for the purpose of generating revenue for street repair and resurfacing, directing the Board of Elections to conduct an election, and declaring an emergency.
Move for non-reading and full.
Well, unfortunately, I'm going to
Oh, sorry. You have to, I'm sorry.
The nature of this ordinance. But I appreciate the sentiment anyway. And with that, I'll begin.
Forgive me, I'm going to step away because I left a bunch of notes downstairs.
You just don't want to hear me read this, I'm sure.
So far, I've been doing it from memory. But I want to quote the number of streets that have been completed, so let me see if we can find that.
By the time you get back, I'll be done.
Yes.
Three pages long.
Read the next one.
All right, we have an ordinance declaring it necessary to renew the provision for an additional one-fourth of one percent income tax to be levied for a period of five years for the purpose of generating revenue for street repair and resurfacing, directing the Board of Elections to conduct an election and declaring an emergency. Whereas, Chapter two-thirty of the codified ordinances of the city of Ashland, Ohio presently provides that all income tax received as a result of the provisions of said chapter shall be used to provide funds for the purpose of the general fund operation, streets and parks of the city. And whereas, Chapter two-thirty of the codified ordinances of the city of Ashland, Ohio presently provides for the levy of an income tax in the amount of one and a half percent per year, and to remain in effect unless and until repealed. And whereas, by ordinance one-eleven dash nineteen, this council declared it to be necessary to provide for the levy of an additional one-fourth of one percent per year income tax for a period of five years in order to provide for the generation of revenue that shall be used for the purpose, sole purpose of street repair and resurfacing. And whereas, said additional income tax was approved by the voters of the city of Ashland, Ohio at an election held March seventeenth, two thousand twenty. And whereas, in order to continue the program of street repair and resurfacing beyond the five-year period authorized by the voters, as aforesaid, this council has determined and declared that it is necessary to submit the question of the renewal of an additional one-fourth of one percent income tax levy for the period of five years to the electors of the city of Ashland, and an election to be held on November fourth, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas, the council finds it to be in the best interest of the city, its residents and inhabitants, to so submit the question to the electors of the city, now therefore, be it ordained by the city, by the council of the city of Ashland, Ohio, its members thereto concurring, that section one, that this council declares that it is necessary to renew the additional tax upon income to be used for street repair and resurfacing purposes pursuant to provisions of Chapter two-thirty of the codified ordinances of the city of Ashland, Ohio, and subject to provisions of Revised Code, Chapter seven-eighteen, and to submit the question of said renewal of one-fourth of one percent tax upon income for a period of five years commencing at the conclusion of the existing income tax for street repair and resurfacing for the years two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one to the electors of the city at an elec, general election to be held on November fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Section two, that this council pursuant to the provisions of Revised Code, Chapter seven-eighteen, authorizes and directs that the question of the renewal of an additional tax of one-fourth of one percent upon income for a period of five years for the years two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one for the purpose of providing for street repair and resurfacing, be submitted to the electors, forgive me, of the city of Ashland, Ohio by the Board of Elections of Ashland County, Ohio at the general election to be held November fourth, two thousand twenty-five, as authorized by law. And said election shall be held at the regular places of voting in said city as established by the Board of Elections of Ashland County, Ohio. Or otherwise, within the time period, time permitted by law, shall be conducted, canvassed, and certified in the manner provided by law. Section three, the form of ballot to be cast at such election on the question of such income tax renewal shall be substantially as follows. Proposed, this is the language of the ballot now, I assume, proposed renewal of one-fourth of one percent income tax, city of Ashland. Majority vote is necessary for passage. Shall the ordinance providing for the renewal of an income tax of one-fourth of one percent on income to be used for street repair and resurfacing purposes for the period of five years effective January first, two thousand twenty-seven, through December thirty-first, two thousand thirty-one, be passed? And section four, that the clerk of the council of the city of Ashland is hereby authorized and directed to request that notice of said election be given as provided by law, and to certify a copy of this ordinance to the Board of Elections of the Ashland County, Ohio. And section five, that all formal actions of this council concerning passage of this ordinance were adopted in an opening, open meeting, and all deliberations of this council and any of its committees which resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one-twenty-one point two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. And section six, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be and is passed as an emergency measure immediately necessary for the preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of said city of Ashland, and for the further reason that such additional revenue is needed to ensure the efficient financial administration of the city of Ashland, Ohio. And section seven, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage by council, and approval pursuant to section twelve of the Charter of the City of Ashland, Ohio. So ends the reading. With that.
All right. So if you paid close attention to that language, this involves our income tax that is in place to fund the repair and resurfacing of our city streets. We have been very blessed that on, I believe, two occasions, our city residents have stepped forward and supported this income tax that is specifically set aside to repair streets. That's why we've been able to repair as many as we have when other communities are struggling to raise the money to do even a few. So far, we have been able to resurface one hundred and forty-six of our two hundred and twenty lane miles. So we have two hundred and twenty lane miles in the city, we have resurfaced over one hundred and forty-six of those. We have three hundred and fifteen streets in our city, and we have resurfaced just over two hundred and twenty of those streets. So we've chiseled away on the list steadily over the last several years. To put things into perspective, it's estimated that this next year, in two thousand twenty-six, which is when this particular measure would expire, we're anticipating in two thousand twenty-six that it would generate two million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand. Now, that sounds like a lot, and it is a lot, but consider this, today, the price of pavement per lane mile is about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand. So even though that is a great budget for us to have for street resurfacing, it does go pretty quick. Now, what I will tell you is that it is, it is, the current levy expires next year, in two thousand twenty-six, but we are suggesting you put it on the ballot in November of this year. And the voters then can make a decision whether or not they want to continue to fund the repair of the city streets. But it's very, very important to our city, there's no doubt. And we keep chiseling away at the streets. Here in July, Sarver Paving is supposed to start a summer pavement program that will do an additional, I think it ends up being around sixty-five streets in the city or throughout the city. So we're getting closer. I know there's still people that are waiting on their street to be resurfaced, but we're getting there. And here's the deal. Even once we hit that three hundred and fifteen streets, it's time to go back and start fixing up the ones that were first on the list. So it's kind of a never-ending saga. We do suggest, or at least the experts suggest, that the pavement should last twelve to fifteen years. But I'll be honest with you, it has everything to do with the weather and where it's located, whether it's in shade. And so there's a variety of factors that determine how long the pavement lasts.
Matt, at one time, we were putting, I can't remember what it was called.
Rejuvenator, and we're still doing that.
Okay.
In fact, we are doing that on more streets this year.
Great.
And some of you that may not know what she's referring to, there is, it's called Pavement Rejuvenator, I believe is what we refer to it as. And it's kind of a pink gel that you spray down on the street, then they come through and put sand on it, then they vacuum it all up, and it has proven to extend the life of pavement. They've done test cases, ODOT has, as well as other cities, and it is, I mean, it definitely makes a difference. And so if you see them out on your street doing that, that's what they're doing. It kind of reseals and rejuvenates. Because I know I've been corrected on that when I said it reseals it, people told me, no, it actually re does something chemically with the, the, the ingredients in that pavement mix that it actually rejuvenates it, what did they tell me?
Well, even putting that sand on the surface with that compound puts another wear surface in there, even if it's just sand, you've still got to wear it off, so. I know Smith Road is, I think it was four years ago, and it was, I think, the first one to get rejuvenated.
It was.
Other than where it's had to be dug up in just a couple spots, you know, to fix things, it's great.
Held up well.
It has held up well.
So it is worth pointing out, this is not a replacement levy, this is a renewal. So it's the same amount as it's been for the last nine years? Because I guess it expires next year, so that'll be year number ten. So we're not asking for any more money, we're just asking our residents to continue to support the streets at the level they have been.
Very good. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion. Yes, ma'am.
That's okay. Like, say if the street needs tore up, like, say for the gas or water or something, who is supposed to repair that?
The utility company would generally, generally come through, so if Columbia Gas or a gas utility or wa, and then it is the city, it is the city that would make that repair.
So many dips. I mean, some of them are getting so low, it's like, you're going to fly over.
Yes. We would have to take a look at the specific one that you're speaking of, because yes, they do settle, they do settle, but usually, we come back through and we will, we will fix it. Yes.
They just did that on King.
Yes, yes.
Two repairs.
They've just redid several on Center Two, and there, filled them in, because the first round, of course, settled, so. Yeah. So if it's, if the city tore it up, then the city will be back through to fix it. Yes. So.
Is there a motion to approve on the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Aye.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Workman.
Aye.
Kyle. Ordinance sixty-seven dash twenty-five.
And item J is an ordinance declaring it necessary to renew the provision of an additional one-fourth of one percent income tax to be levied for a period of five years for the purpose of generating revenue to employ additional police and fire personnel, and equipping them with the necessary equipment, including capital purchases, to perform their duties, directing the Board of Elections to conduct an election, and declaring an emergency. And I'm asking Dr. Lawson to read this particular ordinance, just to break it up a little bit.
All right.
Dan, take it away.
For those of you who are watching from home, if you're ready for bed, this will help you get to sleep. I'll commence the reading with your approval. An ordinance declaring it necessary to renew the provision of an additional one-fourth of one percent, that's zero point two-five percent income tax, to be levied for the period of five years for the purpose of generating revenue to employ additional police and fire personnel, and equipping them with the necess, necessary equipment, including capital purchases, to perform their duties, directing the Board of Elections to conduct an election, and declaring an emergency. Whereas, Chapter two-three-zero of the codified ordinances of the city of Ashland, Ohio presently provides that all income tax received as a result of the provisions of said chapter shall be used to provide funds for the purposes of the general fund operation, streets, and parks of the city. And whereas, Chapter two-three-zero of the codified ordinances of the city of Ashland, Ohio presently provides for the levy, an income tax in the amount of one and one-half, that's one point one, one point five percent per annum, and to remain in the effect unless and until repealed. And whereas, by ordinance of thirty-one dash twenty, this council declared that it be necessary to provide for the levy of an additional one-fourth of one percent, that's zero point two-five percent per annum, income tax for a period of five years, and the order to provide for the generation of renewed and shall be used for the sole purposes of employing additional police and fire personnel. Said revenue to be divided equally between the police and fire departments. This equipment, then, with the necessary equipment, including capital purchases, to be performed for the performance of their duties. Whereas, said additional income tax was approved by the voters of the city of Ashland, Ohio in the general election held on November eighth, two thousand twenty. And whereas, in order to continue the program to employ additional police and fire personnel, said revenue to be divided equally between the police and fire divisions, and equipping them with the necessary equipment, including capital purchases, to perform their duties beyond the five-year period authorized by the voters, as aforesaid, this council has determined and declared that it is necessary to submit the question to the renewal of the additional one-fourth of one percent, zero point two-five, include, income tax levy for the period of five years to the electors of the city as an election to be held on November fourth, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas, council finds it to be in the best interest of the city, its residents and inhabitants, to submit the question to the electors of the city, now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Ashland, state of Ohio, and its members therefore, thereto concurring. Section one, that council declares that it is necessary to renew the additional tax upon income to be used for the purpose of hiring and equipping additional safety forces personnel pursuant to the provisions of Chapter two-three-zero of the codified ordinances of the city of Ashland, Ohio, and subj, subject to the provisions of the Revised Code, Chapter seven-one-eight, and to submit the question to said revenue of one-fourth of one percent, zero point two-five percent taxes upon income for the period of five years commencing at the conclusion of the existing income tax for hiring and equipping additional safety forces personnel, as aforesaid, in the year two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-nine, two thousand thirty, and two thousand thirty-one, to the electors of the city at an election to be held on November fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Section two, council pursuant to the provisions of the Revised Code, Chapter seven-one-eight, authorizes and directs that the question of this renewal of an additional tax of one-fourth of one percent, zero point two-five, upon income for the period of five years for the years two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-nine, two thousand thirty, and two thousand thirty-one for the purposes of providing the hiring and equipping of additional safety forces personnel to be submitted to the electors of the city of Ashland, Ohio by the Board of Elections at Ashland County, Ohio, at the general election to be held on November fourth, two thousand twenty-five, as authorized by law. And said election shall be held at the regular place of voting in said city as established by the Board of Elections of Ashland County, Ohio, or otherwise, within the time permitted by law, and shall be conducted, canvassed, and certified in the manner provided by law. Section three, the form of this ballot shall be cast at such election on the question of such additional income tax shall be substantially as follows. Proposed additional one-fourth of one percent, zero point two-five, income tax to the city of Ashland. Majority vote is necessary for passage. Quote, shall the ordinance provide for the renewal of an income tax one-fourth of one percent, zero point two-five, on income to be used for the purpose of employing additional police and fire personnel? Said revenue to be divided equally between the police and fire divisions, and equipping them with the necessary equipment, including capital purchases, to perform their duties for a period of five years effective January first, two thousand twenty-seven, through December thirty-first, two thousand thirty-one, be passed for the income tax or against the income tax. Section four, that the clerk of council for the city is there, hereby authorized and directed to request that notice of said election to be given as provided by law, and to be certified a copy of this ordinance to the Board of Electors of Ashland County, Ohio. Section five, that all formal actions of this council concerning the passage of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting, and all deliberators of this council or any of its committees, which resulted in such formal action wherein, were in the meeting open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one-two-one point two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. Section six, that this ordinance is hereby declared to be and is passed as an emergency measure immediately necessary for the preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city of Ashland, Ohio, and for the further reasons that such additional revenue be needed to ensure the efficient financial administration of the city of Ashland, Ohio. Section seven, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage by council and approved pursuant to section twelve of the chapter of the city of Ashland, Ohio. There ends the reading.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good job, Dan. I know that's not easy. Thank you. All right.
So at the time that the city residents stepped forward and supported the street levy, nine years ago, ten years ago, they also supported this particular levy. This particular levy supports our police and fire, not only in the number of officers and number of firefighters and paramedics we have in each of those divisions, but also provides them with the equipment they need to do their job. That can be everything from cars to guns, to bulletproof vests, to even helping occasionally maybe with a camera safety system, computers, and otherwise. So that is largely what is funding both of those agencies at this point. We did, during this last ten years, be, for the first time in a long time, became fully staffed and increased the number of officers and the number of firefighter paramedics. Currently, we have thirty-six police officers and forty-one fire paramedics, firefighters' paramedics at the fire department. So that's what the money's been used for. Just so folks that are watching know, we have no choice, that is, if the voters pass these levies, you heard very clearly what it will be used for. So we don't have the choice of borrowing from these funds to pay for something else. It has to be used for what the voters say it will be used for. The first case, it was the streets. The second case, it's for the police and fire. It will generate the same amount in total as the street levy does, but divided between the police fund and the fire fund, each fund would receive an estimated one million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred. So one point one seven four five, one million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Again, this is not a new levy, this is not a replacement levy, it's a renewal of what has already been on the books for now, close to the last decade.
I'd like to point out, so this levy, very similar
Yes.
to the levy we just passed. The language that's going to appear on the ballot is different.
Okay.
The, the bullet point language, right, without getting into the minutia
Yes.
is, for the previous levy is proposed renewal of one-fourth of one percent. The, this current one that's under consideration is proposed additional one-fourth of one percent. I think that's not clear.
And I did have that discussion with Mr. Paxton, and maybe it did not get changed on that? Or is it, is it correct, Mr. Paxton?
There are three errors in this ordinance.
Okay.
One is November fourth is
I saw that, too.
Not number five, apparently I get a little happy with the numbering. It is a renewal, and it needs to say renewal.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
So you probably need to amend the ordinance to say renewal, not additional, or have your, your clerk redrafted, or it can be redrafted real easily for signatures tomorrow. But it is a renewal, it is not an additional, that language was taken from the previous ordinance. And that's why it was accidentally inserted into that. It should not have said that.
It, it clearly says it in the fine print.
Yes, it does.
But nobody, not as many people as you think, read the fine print on the ballot. So I don't want them to think it's additional, when it's really
Absolutely, no, because it is not.
It's a renewal of the additional that was added
There would have been a time.
Ten years ago.
Additional, but
Right, but now it's just a renewal of that. So can we just, can we just amend it?
Yes.
Not right now, strike additional? So I move to amend the motion to fix the fifth to the fourth that Larry mentioned, then also to strike additional and replace it with renewal of.
The third item is section seven.
Instead of three.
Right, and section seven.
Right, and section seven instead of three.
It was a long day, apparently, so
It was.
Apologize for that, I'm sorry.
No, I just
Quickly tried to get this
I don't want to have to come back in next week and do it again with a special meeting, you know? Let's just fix it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Kyle's motion to amend the ordinance as written.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
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 For the record, I read what he meant and not what it said.
Yes.
You did.
I agree.
Except the fourth was an error.
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
We're good. Thank you. All right. Is there any further discussion? Questions for Mr. Paxton or the mayor?
Thanks for getting those ready so quickly, Larry.
Well, the mayor was really
The mayor, yes.
Person behind that to try to
Thank you.
Get me off to get that done.
Well, they have to be turned in to the board of elections in August.
And that's the, 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 the purpose of that is in order to get it on the November ballot, it has to be filed
Sure.
In August, early August. So, and that's why it's here tonight.
Yep.
I do apologize for the
No problem.
No apology necessary.
Not at all.
So if there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve the amended ordinance on the first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye. I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Ordinance sixty-eight dash twenty-five.
And if I could, not to belabor the fact, but I would like to repeat, so everyone knows what just happened. Ten years ago, the voters stepped forward and passed a quarter of a percent sale, quarter of a percent income tax to fund the resurfacing of our city streets. Five years later, it was on the ballot again and they voted for it a second time overwhelmingly. I think it was seventy-six percent of our voters that showed up. Believe it or not, another five years has passed at the end of next year. So we're asking you to renew it so we can continue to maintain these city streets. The second measure, also nine slash ten years ago, the voters, it depends on the elections held before the, the tax takes effect, that's why I say nine or ten years ago. Ten years ago, the voters approved this quarter of a percent to help fund the police and fire, and we have added additional officers and paramedics as a result, and we've equipped them, we're probably better equipped than we ever have been in history, and definitely better staffed than ever in Ashland history. And now it is time for that one to be on the ballot for a renewal as well. So we hope that our voters will see, uh, the services that were delivered as a result of supporting those levies and continue them. Because we would, we'd be in a tough situation without either of those levies on the books because
Right.
That is our street resurfacing program budget, and the other is funding a large number of our police and fire, uh, and personnel, so.
I'll just say it, without this, our program
It would be dramatically different, I can assure you.
Okay, wanted to make that clear. This is truly needed.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah. Um, all right, with that, we'll move to resolutions. Terry, these need to be read, I believe, don't they? They were added late, no?
No.
Okay. Um, first resolution will be a resolution declaring council's intention to vacate certain alley located in the city of Ashland, Ohio. This will be for Sandusky Street.
Okay. All right. For not reading in full.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move, move for not reading in full.
Thank you.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
I don't want Dennis to yell at me.
I'm getting, I'm getting a little fatigued.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want Dennis to yell at me when he gets back.
Dennis is watching because he sent me a number of texts.
Yes.
All right. Is it my turn? I can't remember where we're at.
Yes.
All right. So this is the first of three resolutions that are on our agenda tonight. All three of these resolutions deal with the idea of vacating an alley that the city believes no longer has a public purpose. All three of these that are brought to us tonight are brought to us by our engineer's office, and basically as their staff is out and about working on various projects, they will often stumble upon alleys that were never developed that exist, and technically the city would be responsible for maintaining them. So the first one tonight, and what we're asking the group to do tonight is simply set a public hearing to notify the property owners that are impacted and discuss it at a future date. So tonight, I will just give you a very cursory overview. You can see the names of the streets. This is Sandusky. This is Evergreen. The city has an alley currently in this area. On this end, it's the driveway to these two residents, but if you'll notice, starting here, there is no street. It is completely undeveloped, and therefore the engineering staff feels that it does not serve a public purpose. So that is why tonight, we're bringing this to you for consideration, the possible vacation of this undeveloped alley between Evergreen and Sandusky. So we'd like to ask you to set a public hearing to discuss the matter further.
All right. So with that, we need a motion to approve the hearing of the res, to, to approve the resolution on the first reading and set a date of September second, uh, for public hearing. Would someone like to make that motion?
I move that we approve this resolution to set a public hearing.
For September second.
For September second, thank you.
Second.
Very good.
What did he say?
Aye.
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 I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Resolution eight dash twenty-five.
Then we have a resolution declaring council's intention to vacate a certain alley located in the city of Ashland, Ohio. This will be on Claremont Avenue.
Move for an on-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Resolution eight dash twenty-five.
Then we have a resolution declaring council's intention to vacate a certain alley located in the city of Ashland, Ohio. This will be on Claremont Avenue.
Move for an on-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Resolution nine dash twenty-five.
And then we have an or, uh, resolution declaring council's intention to vacate a certain alley located in the city of Ashland, Ohio. This will be on Pleasant Street.
Steve, we need on-reading in full.
Motion for non
Oh, sorry. I was thinking.
Second.
Move for an on-reading in full.
Second.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye. Again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days.
Second.
Thank you.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Resolution nine dash twenty-five.
And then we have an or, uh, resolution declaring council's intention to vacate a certain alley located in the city of Ashland, Ohio. This will be on Pleasant Street.
Steve, we need on-reading in full.
Motion for non
Oh, sorry. I was thinking.
Second.
Move for an on-reading in full.
Second.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
I'm just so excited, we're almost out of paper.
Absolutely. This is the one that is probably most involved, and it impacts a lot of different properties. But this is Sandusky Street. This is Pleasant Street. I would love to name the name of this homeowner, because quite honestly, that's what will trigger the thoughts of most people, but it is, it's Mr. Mason and the attorney downtown. This is his property, so for a lot of people, that'll give you an idea of where we're talking. Well, as you can see, Mr. Mason's house is right there, and according to our official records, we have an alley right through it. So that particular portion, we're asking you to vacate, and I will tell you that the property owner did contact us after becoming aware of this and assured us there's no alley where his house is. So we can see that. Now, right here, there is a alley that goes two directions, off of Pleasant Street, back to a second alley. I guess it's considered one, but obviously it has a bit of an intersection there. It, too, has a house that's built over part of it. However, people still do use the drive there to access this garage and to access this property. So this one will get more involved when we actually get into the hearing, but then down here, there's an undeveloped alley, but currently, part of it is serving a drive as a drive for this house, but there's all sorts of stuff on this end of it that there's no traffic that ever goes through because people are storing items at that end. So it's a unique situation, but we'll have plenty to discuss at the hearing.
That will be vacated also.
That is what is being proposed.
Yes.
Yes.
Looks like it goes through a portion of a house and garage.
Exactly. So that one, I'm sure, we'll have quite a discussion when the come, hearing is held.
All right. So with that, is there a, we did first reading, correct?
We need to do first reading?
Oh, thank you.
So with that, is there a motion to approve the resolution on the first reading and set a hearing date for September second?
I move to approve on the first reading and that we set a date for September second.
Thank you, I'll second.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Again, I'll move to suspend the rules for three separate readings, three separate days. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Resolution ten dash twenty-five.
We have no whole business this evening, unless council has something to bring forward. New business, we have a pending opioid settlement, and what we need in this instance is a motion to approve the Purdue settlement, uh, as proposed, and Andrew, would you like to give a little bit further?
Certainly. So as council is aware, we've been in, I think, six or seven years now in ongoing litigation and against opioid manufacturers and distributors, and there have been a number of settlements over the years. The mechanics of how those get approved vary from case to case. In this particular instance, they'd like a motion, roll call, vote, just approving of the settlement plan with Purdue, one of the manufacturers. Uh, it's an eight million, eight billion dollar settlement, um, which will then be shared and ultimately funneled down through, to us, um, in accordance with the memorandum of understanding that was entered into several years ago, so.
Very good.
And we have received tens of thousands of dollars at this point through these settlements. It's, it's small increments, but over the years, it's starting to add up, so.
Yeah, and there's specific things we spend that on.
Yes, related usually
Yeah, all related to treatment or
Or, yes.
Prevention.
Yes.
So as Attorney Bush cited, we need a motion, uh, to approve and accept the Purdue settlement.
I move that we approve the Purdue settlement as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you.
Woodward?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
All right. Moving on now to the advertising permit. This will be for Titan Roofing Solutions LLC. Walter Meyer, was Walter here?
He is not.
Okay. Uh, two-twelve Sharon, two-twelve Sharon Avenue, Ashland, and, uh, they did supply a, uh, copy of, sample of, of what they proposed to, uh, put on doors, so with that, um
And they paid their fifteen dollars.
Very good.
Yeah.
We appreciate, uh, before taking a vote here, we so appreciate their doing things according to the process, and, and I know I receive at least once a week, somebody knocking on the door to sell me something, so, and I always ask them the same question. Do you have a permit to go door to door? And obviously, they just work for the companies. It's not the owner necessarily
So they normally don't probably know.
Yes, so, uh, but anyway, here we are, and with that, is there a motion to approve this advertising permit?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Lawson?
Aye.
Workman?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Woodward?
Aye.
All right. Moving then to finance director's report.
Really have no report at this point. I think I probably set it up, seeing
Thanks, Larry. That's okay. Council comments, uh, I'll begin with, uh, stating that we will recess, the plan is to recess in August. There will be no council meetings scheduled, so first meeting will be September second. And with that, Jason?
I have no comments this evening.
All right.
I just want to thank everybody in the audience for sticking around for a couple hours